I see the size for whole summer in Seattle.
Oh, whole summer.
Yeah, and you can go online and you can get your security card. You know, and then they'll deliver the stuff like things. Just that's ridiculous.
Maybe it's not a good problem, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, so these are deep. I've got them. It's like, yeah, I got to shop. Yeah.
Right now.
See already well.
And then.
Cause it's like. Oh, yeah, it's like you're just fifteen pages. Like just be stopped. So yes, right. I'll even step on the boat or those laughing.
Yeah. You're like, what's going on?
Been doing the big thing.
So you should.
Yeah. Yeah, smoking is illegal. I know the guys are, but how about smoking as yet?
Uh, first thing, well, people are getting the little election.
Seaters.
Oh, man, anytime I watch it, it's always delayed. It's last weekend. It's last weekend. And you just. Like all the rules.
Really.
Strapped. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, her next is.
Yeah, then you can try it.
All right.
Stay here.
But it's a whole game chair next to you. They get access borders. All that's.
See, that's where it's first.
Whoa, how many do we got online?
We have Sherry also.
Just one by door.
I mean, tell them.
Now we. How about chair?
I'm glad he's here.
Eight.
Eight.
And this Laurie should be joining us as well. Laurie's. Laurie's already on. Okay, so we have eight.
Two.
Yeah, I said hello.
Oh, hello.
Oh. We have Tom saying.
Okay. Just waiting for Tessa, so she said she's long in our.
Oh, good. Oh, gosh, this guy. Sorry.
I was looking for the background.
Something blurred like there could be a landing.
Oh, you're. It's soccer. I'm like.
Gee, yeah.
Serious part. I know. And then visionless from my life. It's sports. It's like. My father.
That was cool. I used to ride my bicycle, but down at St. George. Right into a lot of traffic. Yeah, I do come up here. So we get, you cannot get your ride with somebody.
Yeah.
Well, eight firsts. Seven, three, eight, great. Longest one. One of those people around.
Good morning, yeah.
Say the, hey, how's it going?
Cause like you're just like, yeah. This seems we good.
Oh, really?
I'll leave her birthday.
I just thought some overrated. Cameras.
Hey, overrated.
We get never. My feel.
Yes, just a light now.
Oh, awesome.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good morning. And welcome to our May twenty eighth board meeting.
April.
April. Twenty eighth. Somebody's gotta pick the straight. Um, all right, well, it's a roll call. See if I do it right this time.
Greg Shelton.
Present.
And the eight grade.
Here.
Hannah Harvey here. Six. Diana Hurgher.
Here.
Pete Zusman.
Hi.
Laurie Strangham.
Here. Here.
R.C. Houseman. Excuse. Badminton. Excuse. Nick Suttery.
Here.
Patrick Schaefer. Ralph Pino. Sherry Horn.
Here.
Tessa Skidser.
Present.
Tom DeSiren.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katerina. Appreciate you. And it looks like we've got the consent items. Any comments or motions on those? Cool. Anybody? I'll move to who you consent items.
Second. Thanks.
Thanks, someone. Um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move.
Aye.
Aye.
Assuming that one will be.
That's what the ayes, not the.
Yeah, all right, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Looks like we have a section for public comments. Um, that was for both.
Okay, it's for.
That's what I heard. Um, any public comment? We do have a three minute limit. If there is any anything coming off over the wire.
He got, maybe he got one in.
Would be on. Uh, business items, board member training certification.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Katerina. This is just a reminder for you all. Go ahead.
That we require board member training from the state auditor's office. For new board members within the first year or existing board members every four years. So I'll type base for the people that I still need to certify from this.
Awesome.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Yep.
You can do that online on the state auditor's website, but also the UESD posts a board member training every year at the convention. So if you go to that first day of the convention on the Wednesday, or even if that's all you do is just go to the Wednesday part, they're authorized by statute to give you your certification as well. It's free that it was worth.
That's a good time anyway.
Lots of water.
Yeah, it's a good event. What is the conference?
It's the Utah Association of Special Districts. Um, and they have an annual convention in early November every year, and it's like two and a half days. Uh, Wednesday's the first day is a half day, and that's just board member training where they do this. And then Thursday and half a Friday is just presentations about local government district law. The district matters, not just law. Yeah.
And where is it?
Um, they move it around lately. They've been having a lot in Davis Convention Center that they really liked. So within the last few years, but historically it's moved around. Posted.
And you.
Yeah.
And free meals, yeah.
Wow, you do pay for them.
Yeah, I know.
This is real.
How much is it?
I mean, you know. Not sure, but the district will sponsor board members. And we usually give you the information in September because there's an early board, early.
Early.
Yeah. Uh, registration. So we'll make sure we get that out to y'all and just let us know if you, your city wants to sponsor it. If you'd like us to do it, that's fine. Happy to do it.
And it's open statewide. It's really nice to network with people from districts all across the state. Everyone gathers, it's really cool.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And you'll run into at least a few of us out there, so.
Yeah, for sure.
It's fine. I plan to go every year.
Oh, do you stay over?
I do. I, I pay for the hotel out of my pocket because it's out, it's within that fifty mile
range.
Range where nobody wants to pay for it. It's, it's more convenient than driving through traffic. It would be.
Yeah.
There, so. And it's, it's honestly, the, the rates are actually pretty reasonable. So it's not like a go to Vegas or shit like thirty, like three hundred dollars a butt.
Awesome. Oh, thanks. We loved it though.
All right, thank you. Uh, looks like, uh, twenty twenty five first quarter financial report. Helen.
Hey. So first page is the revenues for the first quarter. And this is the first quarter that customers receive their bill that includes new rates. And we can see that the accrued residential waste collections revenue and the green curbside revenue increased thirty one and twenty percent respectively over the same period in twenty twenty four, which matches what the rate increase was for those items. So for residential waste collection, we billed seven point two million dollars, almost seven point three million dollars. And in twenty twenty four, in the same quarter, it was five point five six million dollars. So uh, we're twenty five percent of the way through the year at the end of March and revenues are at twenty five point eight percent. So everything looks okay there. Um, if we move to the next slide, we'll go to personnel expenses. And wages and salaries are at six point three eight percent over twenty twenty four, um, primarily due to the board approved four percent core for twenty twenty five. And the remaining increase is a combination of employee merit increases for their, on their anniversaries and PTO payouts for separated employees for the first quarter of twenty twenty five. And if there are no questions there, we'll move to operating expenses. And we've, as I said, we're at twenty five percent of the way through the year. We're at seventeen point seven five percent spent. Well, eighteen point oh nine total, but seventeen point seven five for operating expenses. Um, so no concerns there. Fuel, the maintenance costs are down of a hundred and four thousand dollars over twenty twenty four, uh, which is due to the timing of invoices from county fleet. We do expect that to catch up next quarter. They had some billing issues or some software issues. And so some things were put out incorrectly, and so they're trying to correct everything. And they're doing soccer right now. So.
If I may just chime in just real quickly. Um, the scrap just started in April, so we'll see that seasonal trend as well. It's personnel and operational costs fall out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so go to the next slide. That's moving to our maintenance costs for the first quarter again. And we can see that little drop from twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four is the blue line, twenty twenty five is the green. Um, and again, it's due to timing and receiving and paying invoices. And also not, not receiving any replacement trucks in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. We did receive replacement trucks in the first quarter of twenty twenty four. That's always an increased maintenance cost. Actually, I have to get those ready to go out on the street. So that's another reason for it. Then if we move on to fuel expense history, um, fuel expenses are less this year compared to last year because the fuel prices are down for both CNG and diesel. Uh, we get fuel price from those invoices from fleets. And we usually show you a little graph that shows what the prices are for each. We left that out this time just because we want to give you accurate information. And we know that those rates were not accurate because of the building problem that they had. So that will be corrected for next quarter. And then if we move on to commodity tons collected and costs as of March thirty first, uh, garbage and recycling tonnage has decreased slightly from the first quarter in twenty twenty four. Um, the average garbage tip fee is thirty five dollars and sixty seven cents per ton. And, um, that is with Trans Jordan being at forty one dollars, Salt Lake Valley Transfer Station being at thirty seven and Salt Lake Valley landfill being at twenty nine. The price proximity model saved a hundred and eighty six thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars in garbage tip fees by delivering the waste from Magna Encourage to the landfill versus the Salt Lake Valley Transfer Station, which is an eight dollar per ton difference. So that's working. Um, recycling fees decreased twenty seven dollars per ton in the first quarter of twenty twenty five versus twenty twenty four. Um, and subscription green waste began in mid-March with a slight uptick in tonnages from twenty twenty four. Green waste processing fees increased from seventeen dollars to twenty dollars per ton in twenty twenty five. So any further questions about that? Okay. Then if we move on, excuse me, to refunds, we have, um, two ways people get refunds. If they pay through express bill pay, they usually get the refund that way. Or we cut them a check. They pay with a check, we definitely cut them a check. Um, and we had thirty four refunds in the first quarter with twelve thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, excuse me, we have several that were paid in error. And those are usually people who are paying monthly rather than quarterly. They see their quarterly bill and they put it into like a bank bill pay situation. And they pay that same amount monthly rather than quarterly. So they come back and ask us for a refund because they far overpaid. Um, and then we have, um, payments on closed accounts that of course we refund back to the customers. Um, and we had one that had no additional can that we ended up refunding back to them because we were billing them for a can they didn't have.
May I just say that on the additional can, we go back four years. So if they tell us, well, I've had it for, you know, I never had it for ten years. You've been billing me. The board set the policy of a limit of four, going by state statute of, you know, we would not. We only can go back and back bill for four years. So we, we only will refund for four years. And it's really up to the resident to pay attention to their bill.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, we go to the next slide. That's capital purchases. And, um, we have purchased so far this year, we purchased a chassis for the copilot truck from twenty twenty four, which was a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty two dollars. The total cost for that truck is expected to be a hundred and ninety two thousand, eight twenty two after we purchased the body. And, um, that's slightly over budgeted. We had budgeted a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, but we did order eight diesel side load trucks at four hundred nine, four fifty six per unit for a total of three point two seven five, rather than the three point four nine two that we budgeted for the CNGs. Uh, because we switched those, if you remember, from CNGs to diesel. And the four diesel trucks ordered in twenty twenty three for twenty twenty four are due to arrive in the second quarter of this year, twenty five.
And the eight that we have on order are probably not gonna get here till twenty twenty six. There was a big delay. Can't need equipment. Still.
Hey, we go, I'm sorry, was there a question? Okay, if we go to the next slide, I had a request to add years to the cash balances, which I did. I went back and added them back to twenty sixteen on a month by month basis. Uh, we can see in the line graph that the patterns are pretty, pretty much the same throughout all the years, except for twenty twenty four, when we start to see that dip down in cash balance. And then the gold or orange on the left is this year through March. Um, because I added those extra years, I did add a note that operating expenses during that same timeframe, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty four, um, increased thirty five point eight percent while the cash balances decreased thirty eight point one percent over that same time period. And are there any questions about the financial report? That's my last slide for that. I mentioned.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, it's like we are on to the general managers report.
Okay, uh, I just wanna say that we had Earth Day on April twenty second, which was Tuesday last week. And just a reminder that we have, um, programs and services in place to help the stewardship of Earth Day and also environmental stewardship, uh, with the recycling, the green waste and the, the, um, curbside, excuse me, curbside green waste, the green trailer rental, uh, and then anything that we can do to help people sign up for the green waste and glass as well in the central sites of glass. So just briefly, so if you'll move on, let's keep going. Everybody's, uh, on target today, I can tell. So I wanted to go through this, this month, I thought I'd go through some cost saving measures that we are taking. Um, as you know, we have the, the thirty three percent increase fee, but it's also, we're always trying to strive to watch our costs, curb them wherever we can. So this is something that we as staff taught to you, um, briefly about last year as one of our goals going forward is looking at what we call go backs or verifying an actual missed can. So we have residents that call us every day and say, you missed my can. Well, we started to look at that and staff did a trial and a test, basically. Two separate tests, two weeks each to see what, what have we really missed? So we have the, the tool of the dash cam on the trucks, which is very helpful for many different things. And then it's also helpful to verify, did we really miss that can or was it a late set? Or they just, you know, didn't have it out or whatnot. So forty six percent of during that test were falls and flames. So we thought there's some low hanging fruit with saving money because we're, we put in a very conservative estimate of about six dollars per mile that we can save. And then if we're looking at a fully loaded cost of twenty five fifty per mile, and that's fully loaded, you know, gas, fuel, the truck purchases, um, overhead, everything. So right now, the first quarter in verifying those go backs, we're saving almost twenty four thousand dollars just in that first quarter, which I think is amazing. As a big shout out to the customer service team because they're the ones that are going back and looking at the dash cam when they have a minute. Um, and as you know, scrap has started, so it's getting a little busier. So, but they're still dedicated, taking the time to do this, so it's, it's worth it for sure.
Um, but we're really grateful for their efforts. That is a lot of extra work and, um, and really beneficial.
Yeah, very much so. Be a lot of praise, lots of kudos and, and extra food and treats on our behalf, so. Yeah, and then looking at recruitment and hiring, uh, for employee satisfaction. Uh, right now, we currently have two driver vacancies. And that's been a long time since we've been this fully staffed, which is amazing. Uh, part of that is in, in contribute to, uh, the apprentice program. Uh, one of those vacancies will be filled with an apprentice. Uh, and then the other one, we have somebody on scrap who will be, um, when he comes off scrap, he'll be working on a side load. With our accounting position, which is formerly the controller treasurer, Helen and I have been talking about that. We, um, as you know, we had our controller treasurer move on. And so we looked at that position and thought, what do we really need? And so Helen, would you mind just touching on that?
Sure. So yes, as Pam mentioned, we, we kind of felt like the controller treasurer position, the controller portion of that itself is probably not necessary in, in our size, uh, along with the finance director. And so, um, I feel like what we really, and I think Pam agrees, well, she does, um, what we really need is more of an accountant. And I'd like to have an accountant go at a more senior level than just an entry level accountant, somebody who has some, you know, experience, maybe some government experience would be fantastic. Um, but I think that will seed our needs better and, and fulfill what, what we're looking for. And that will save us money as well because that classification, of course, will be less than a controller position. Um, and then the controller treasurer was supervising two of our employees. Uh, we have in our department, we have, uh, four total employees, well, five total employees, I guess, including myself.
Yes.
Um, and two of those employees were reporting to, directly to the controller treasurer. But they will, uh, start reporting directly to me. They are right now, they will report directly to me. That'll give me an opportunity to get to know them better, get to know their processes, what they're doing and keep a, you know, closer watch on, on everything that's happening in our department. So I feel really good about that change.
I do as well. Support it. So the plan is to finalize the job description and we'll get together with a compensation consultant uh, later this week, uh, before we announce, we'll make sure we call from class that and get it out. So that should save some money. I also wanna give a shout out to David Ica, who's our operations manager for taking on some of the tracking and David, you raised your hand, please. Um, he is really a whiz kid, as I call it, as is Helen with Excel. And tracking expenditures and costs. He's got a dashboard for managers to keep track of the program, cost accounting, that they can just look at. And it's up to speed and live, which is amazing. It's awesome. All right. Moving on, uh, we have an upcoming vacancy with a retirement from a supervisor involved. And with the changes with the scrap program, as you know, we were out on the street and it required a lot of labor, a lot of oversight. Um, now that it's in the driveways, I think it gives opportunity to really say, do we still need five full-time supervisors? So, uh, Bill Hobbs is our, our veteran supervisor who has an ability to retire at the end of May. So in the May meeting, we'll have a resolution for him, for you to adopt, and you can recognize him. Um, he's, uh, twenty eight years is what he'll have. And, uh, very dedicated soul. Gonna miss him. I, I call him the truth teller. And so I've just said to staff, somebody needs to take over and speak the truth. I mean, everybody does, don't get me wrong, but he just black and white and let me know, and I love it. So at any rate, um, David, you heard David laughing back there. He's, yeah, he knows, we all know Sione, yeah, we love Bill. Uh, at any rate, David is spearheading with Sione and Justin to really see what are our needs. And then also Andy King is our asset manager. There's a supervisor over him for trailers. Um, so we're anticipating we'll be able to absorb that, but more information will follow. All right, then the seasonal container reservation program kicked off, as I mentioned. It kicked off in April and, and we started in Murray and Holiday. And we did the reservation a little differently this year. And so we've learned, you know, what to put on our website, what not. We confused some of the Murray residents. We wanna make sure that everybody was eligible for the program. Um, it was just the scheduling, uh, but Murray had open, open season basically at any time to, to, to get online. It's just when they, when it was booked, they got confused about that opt out section. So we, we pulled that right away so there wasn't any confusion.
Yes, and I appreciate that. And you responded right away when I had the complaint, so thank you.
You bet. Education is important, getting the right information out there. Um, we started the season with ten, uh, full-time drivers. That's the most we've had when we started. But within the first week, we lost three, which was unfortunate due to some performance issues. So, um, at any rate, we have one new one starting today, a new driver. We are doing this season without the, um, quote unquote, ground crew. The, previously, we had us another person in the cab driving with the driver and then helping to tarp the truck or excuse me, the container before they loaded it on. Um, and then David and Sione looked at that and do we really need that? So we've slowed down the drivers, you know, make sure that they understand they, you know, six to seven a day is plenty. There's no rush because they also have to tarp on their own. Um, and so far, it's been going okay. It was just those other oopses that occurred were loading the container on the truck and folks that just didn't have enough experience. So it is tricky. So anyway, any questions on that? You can see the calendar and the rotation. We do go clockwise once we start. And then next year, I think we move to start in Clotwood Heights, I believe, and then we'll rotate around again.
Oh, Pam, I do have one question. Um, I remember the last time I reserved all those, I think it indicates that I'm supposed to tarp it. Half the time, I'm tarping on the trailer. Is that just depending on if there is one or are we not, as the renter, supposed to tarp that?
Good question. So there, the trailer rental, there is a tarp that rolls. That one, we as residents are supposed to tarp.
Okay.
The container, roll off container, we are not. Other than, I don't know, with the rental, David, Sione, can you remind me? What with the, now we have the role of a container that people can rent. So thank you for asking that question. Do you, do you recall, David, are we requiring them to tarp it or do our drivers do that?
It's probably, you know, probably.
Okay. Dan, thank you.
If it's there, then do it.
Yeah.
So we may wanna update that language.
Okay.
If there is a tarp, then we'll start to. If not, don't worry about it.
On the container.
Right, renting one while on the outside, but they forget to leave it. Am I gonna get fined for this?
Gotcha. Good question.
I didn't worry about it too much, but it's something that I think, something for tonight.
Okay, we'll make sure it's clear. Thank you for that feedback.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on. Any other questions before we roll? Hey. Here's the hot topic of the day, uh, monthly billing. So I'm just gonna do a little intro, um, and then first also just thank Helen. Um, she really dove into this information. She also has the workload of, you know, um, carrying on in our, our controller treasurer's absence and handling everything. And it's, again, I wanna thank David for helping out with that as well. The, just to recap, what we have before you is a lot of information that you all have requested to come back. I personally feel like this is a compelling case to move to monthly. And I'm gonna let Helen take that because I don't wanna steal her thunder. But honestly, in looking at the numbers and the graphs and everything she's put together, and I've mentioned before that I really like the healthy cash flowing in. You know, everything we looked at in that first quarter review was based on accrued revenue, meaning we booked it. It actually didn't hit until this month and part of it in May. So that, you know, million dollars, those millions of dollars. So that, you know, million dollars, those millions of dollars really doesn't hit. So in in what we're doing in the meantime is just trying to keep up. With any cash residual that we might have from uh year end, if that makes sense. And I'm probably slaughtering it, so I'm gonna make sure I turn it over to our expert. But honestly, I think what you'll see, um it'll help. And I do want to say that. I would like us to move to a a decision today. Um, so we'll get to that at the end if we could. So. Go ahead, Helen. Kick us off.
Okay. Well, uh, the first chart there is what you have seen before a couple of times. In fact, I did change. The interest rate from four percent to three percent um for interest revenue. Uh, because the ten year P T I interest rate average was about three percent. So I made that change. Um, and that leaves, but we still have the seven hundred and seventy six thousand thirty seven dollar increase in costs that going to the billing will cause annually. Um, if you go to the next slide though. Uh, we had a request to add more years to this line graph. Um, we presented this graph to you the last, I think, two times, maybe just once. I don't remember. Um, but that went from twenty twenty one through twenty twenty five. And we had a request to add more years, so I changed it to twenty sixteen at the beginning. And we projected out through twenty twenty six for monthly billing if we were to go to monthly. The blue line is the cash balances each month. The yellow or gold line at the bottom is expenditures, cash outlays per month. Uh, that have actually happened. And then on a quarterly basis, quarterly billing basis projected forward through twenty twenty six. The black dotted line is. What if what cash balances would be if we had started monthly billing in twenty twenty three, January of twenty twenty three going forward. And then the red dotted line is ex cash expenses under the same circumstances. And that does include the increased costs on a monthly basis. It's at seven hundred and seventy six thousand divided by twelve. Which is, I think, sixty two thousand four eighty four added per month. So it just kind of lays on top of the other expenditure line. And on a monthly basis, it's not enough to really lift the line, but it does total out to the seven hundred and seventy six thousand. Um, but what I'd like to do is go to the next page or the next slide. And that's the same graph, but it's a close up of the years from twenty twenty two through the end of twenty twenty six. And I think it makes it pretty clear to me anyway, um, the benefit on a cash flow basis of going to monthly billing. Because this black line shows a much healthier, more comfortable spot for cash balances as we go forward through the years. Um, we can see in twenty twenty five, we're projecting that our capital expenditures, based on what the vendors have told us. Will come in in the summer of twenty twenty five. And those, the blue line and the gold line are not actually going to cross based on these projections. But if timing changes, I mean, they could. Um, and then going into twenty twenty six, we've done our best to project what we believe will be our cash outlays. For capital costs there too, based on our order for this year. Um, and again, you know, those lines get, in my opinion, kind of dangerous dangerously close together. And what this demonstrates to me is, you know, monthly billing is. Necessary, in my opinion, based on what we see here. Um, if you go to the next slide, if there aren't any questions on that slide yet.
May I?
Yes.
Point out, um, with the assumptions of a four percent increase in operational costs, that was also Zion's recommendation for. At least for another year to go that high. Normally, we had done three percent expenditure increases and a one percent revenue. So we stuck with the one percent revenue and went with Zion's recommendation. The other thing to point out is on the expenditures, uh or excuse me, the revenue. It does not include that recommended dollar fifty per home per month increase in twenty twenty six. So that is without that additional revenue, just an effort.
Thank you for reminding me about that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, if we go to the next slide, this is just the data that's in this line graph that you just saw. Um, we had a request to have the actual numbers presented, and that's what this is. We also had a request to have the high number and low numbers. So the hi, the high numbers in each column are green and the low numbers are yellow. Um, there's not, it's a little bit scattered. There's not really much of a pattern, I don't think. Um, but that first row is on a quarterly billing basis. And the next row is on a monthly billing basis, if we were going to do that from twenty twenty three forward. And then the. Last columns are the difference between the ending cash balance for the month minus the next month's operating expenses. So that shows you what's left over, basically. And but again, it's just the data that's in that, the hard graph or the line graph I've heard before. Are there any questions about this? No. Okay, the next one is new. And it is a chart that shows what I would consider emergency cash, but it's a cash available for unexpected expenses. This calculation is on a monthly basis. Quarterly versus monthly billing. Um, the cash balance in the month minus the operating expenses for that month. Minus the total cash, I mean, the total capital cash outlay we project for the year. Because that's sporadic. We don't know exactly what goes on going to come in. So I just take those out completely, you know, on each month to show what cash is available in that month. And we can see on a quarterly basis, you know, in the summer of twenty twenty four, we didn't have the money to pay all the capital expenses. Had they all come in at the same time. Um, much less have anything left over or anything unexpected to my prefer. Um, on a monthly basis, those are the green bars. Monthly billing basis are the green bars, quarterly billing are the blue bars. So again, we can see that, you know, just from a, an emergency cash or unexpected expenses basis. Monthly billing helps us there as well.
And then just to, uh, one of the things I had Helen clarify for my. My sake, you know, sanity was that dropping that low doesn't mean that we're out of business. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we don't have a negative cash balance at that point. Because I've taken out the entire capital projects expenditures.
But that's just assuming, like, if all those capital expenditures came in in any of those months, then we would be.
That's exactly right. And then if you go to the next slide, um, again, that's the, this is the data that is in the chart that you just saw. So these are the numbers that go into that chart. I don't really have any further comments on that unless somebody has a question. Okay. And then the final slide for this presentation. Um, this is if the board does approve us to go to monthly billing. This is our plan and potential timeline of moving forward to monthly billing. Our first, what we project would be our first monthly bill will be sent in February for January services of twenty twenty six. Um, if we implement the cost saving measures that we have discussed in in previous board meetings. I'd like to see the transaction fee implemented. That would be transaction fee and credit card payments. Implemented in January of twenty twenty six. That says a little short blue line. Um, we would do an RFP for online portal, which is right now express bill pay, uh, starting in June. And um evaluate that, have them come in and evaluate it. And then if we need to. Switch to a new gender, we could start that process and have that done by the time that we, but before January, basically. Um, and that's something that we're going to do anyway. I mean, these are things that we want to to pursue regardless of if we go to monthly billing, but it will definitely help mitigate those increase costs. Um, and then our contract for um the data center, which is who we use for our bill print and other services for bills. Um, that contract does not expire until December of twenty twenty six. So we can't really pursue that until that time, but next summer, we would start an RFP process for that. In fact, we will start an RFP process for that. And again, of course, implement if we do have to change, we would definitely get after that. Time. And then we've also discussed the email information. Um, trying to encourage customers to go onto e-bills, taking us in the for bill printing mailing. Um, I've talked to express bill pay. They actually would assist us with no extra charge for that. There was a question last time about what it costs for an evil for them to send out an evil to a customer who's not getting a paper bill. And there is no extra charge for that. That's included in our base fee. We get, we pay a monthly maintenance and support fee that it is included in. So there would be no extra charge for that.
Do we get a discount if we get them off of paper bills?
Saving to me?
Um, well, we get the savings and the fact that we're not printing and mailing the bill, but we don't get a a discount, yeah.
Right. Do we see that as as savings though, or?
Yes.
Form of savings towards the company, the better that's doing the billing process.
Um, it's not a savings for express bill pay in any way. I mean, it. In fact, it probably costs a little bit more to send over those extra e-bills. I don't know, but they don't charge us for that. Um, but it is a savings for us because we don't have to pay for the printing mailing of the bill. Well, you know, twelve times if we go to them later, even four times.
So it's a pretty significant benefit that they get off of the bill.
I think so. I think so, yeah. It really adds up. Um, but our plan for that is to put an insert in the bill that goes out in July for the second quarter of this year. And then again, in the bill that goes out in October for the third quarter of this year. To remind people, let people know that we do offer e-bill and to try to encourage them to do so. Express Bill Pay has some wording. I didn't bring it with me, but they do have some suggestive wording. And they will help us in that endeavor as well, even though they're all the online stuff. And they will send out for no extra charge emails to those customers. We have their email address who are not on e-bill. Trying to encourage the same thing. So that's our plan for trying to encourage people to go to e-bill right now. And again, that's something that we plan to do regardless of if we go to the billing.
Bring cost and.
Yeah.
So good plan.
I don't really want to dive into this too much today. We've got a lot to cover, but sometime in the future, um, I remember Matt mentioning. Last meeting, the the looking at the option of just requiring.
Or new ones.
And I, like I said, I don't want to dive into that skip, but somehow I would love to have that discussion.
Absolutely. And it's something that we can explore. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, there's been a lot of thought and uh labor put into this. Uh, I'm not fond of increasing costs. I mean, obviously. Um, however, looking at the the information and the plan. It really makes good business sense for us to move to monthly. As I mentioned, hindsight, I wish we would have done this from the get go. Um, we wouldn't have to have this discussion, but um. The, for me is a, you know, running the business, that cash flow and having a steadier. Cash flow coming in every year and then a healthier year end balance is extremely desire desirable for me. Um, to make sure that we are solvent going forward. So I want to again, shout out to Helen. Uh, this took a lot of work. Um, she's very skilled and I'm thankful. Again, I want to state that as she walked through our door.
Yeah, absolutely.
I I think that this data is incredibly compelling, especially when you look at the emergency cash situation. I mean. I don't think anyone would want their their business budget, their personal budget to to look like this.
Leaves us vulnerable.
Very.
Amen. Yeah. I, you know, I was so stressed last year.
Um, and then also just the base, this, this one that goes over, that illustrates the point. I also think, um, and today, and today is a good example of of how I feel like with every decision you're making. Looking at this, people retire, do we need this, can we adjust this? Um, I I feel like um. You run this organization incredibly frugally and are always trying to live at cost savings. And so when you're. When you're requesting something that would increase expenses, I I think um. You have a reputation of of not spending money where it's not needed. So I think that is compelling. And it's obvious, that's how.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhian. I think it also provides a better service to to our patrons, to, I know from my systems. They like the idea of budgeting and being able to have a monthly bill rather than, you know, trying to figure it out. So. I think it's it's a positive thing for us. I want to share, you has her hand up if there's.
Sherry.
I have a hard time figuring out how to raise my hand on this thing. It's much easier to be in there. Um, I am, just have a question. I don't disagree with any of the advantages at all. My my hiccup is. Has been and continues to be the cost. It's substantial. Um, and I, I'm just curious why. We've been able to maintain a budget for, you know, well over a decade now at quarterly billing. And still figure out how to to make adequate cash balance. And now we can't figure it out. Can you help me understand that?
Well, I think part of it is, um. You know, if you saw on that, in the financial report, I showed that we had. Increased operating costs, I think thirty five percent over that time period. And the cash balance has also decreased over that time period. Um, but we have increased costs and I don't think that the fee increases have been terribly consistent. I mean, I'm coming in late in the game here. So but that's my understanding is that our fee increases haven't really been keeping up with that. And that catches up with you eventually, and it's catching up with us now. Um, and on that line graph where you see the. The cash balance stay kind of high, even though like consistent rather than how it consistent. Um, I believe that's because, you know, we've had such a delay in receiving our capital equipment. That because that cash is still in there, that's holding that cash balance up. But if it had been paid and purchased in the timing that we expected to and wanted it to be. That cash balance would have started dropping a lot sooner than twenty twenty four. But because of those delays, those amounts have been just kind of holding that cash balance up. That's my feeling about it.
That's objective eyes coming in, and I really appreciate that uh very much to say, you know. Let's look at the history. And I I've mentioned before, we were on target to raise rates in twenty twenty two. And, you know, the information looked, because we had such a delay on trucks coming in. That we could postpone. And hindsight is always twenty twenty. Five years, we've always been on target every three to four years to raise rates. And and you know, the information was presented, um, the board and and I felt like we were okay to wait till twenty twenty three. And it looked like two fifty would have been enough. And then hindsight is like, wow, that. And and we're, we're a small enough organization that, you know, something like that unforeseen. Can we rebound from? And the only way we could rebound from that was to raise rates thirty three percent, which is higher. That's almost. It is double than what we've had to do in the past or needed to do. So it it's a valid question, Sherry. I think that we are in uh unique times. Will costs come down? Well, I I hope they just stop from escalating, you know, the the high percentage that we've had. That's my hope. And then that the idea is to keep up with the the cost increase and keep the rates. Uh, where residents can manage those. I mean, you know yourself from this last fee increase that you all went out to shop. So that's concerning as well. So what can we do? Um, I really feel like we can absorb the majority of this this increased cost and we'll report back as we go for sure.
Uh, I would have to, I have to mention that just the delay of that money sitting in the account. That when we had to come pay the bill for those trucks, it was higher, wasn't it?
Yes, that's true.
So that was the fact that it was really hard for unexpected uh. Cash.
Yeah, a lot of unexpecteds have happened.
I guess I don't disagree with what you're saying. It's just odd to me that. That the cash was not unexpected. We budgeted for those trucks. And so. We should have, that should have been clearly articulated on any kind of cash balance thing. It should have shown all along. That here's our cash balance, but in reality, here's our cash balance because this is already taken. Do you know what I mean? Just like the last time we talked about it.
Sure do. It sounds like what you're saying is you would have liked this, this uh chart that shows the emergency cash where um. Helen took out the.
Trucks.
The the trucks, the capital flows, and and we weren't doing that before. That's.
That's correct.
Cause it's, cause this is the one, cause if we had been doing that, if we'd been looking at this data, we probably would have seen those trends sooner.
Yes.
Okay, that's the thing that's troubling to me. It's like, oh, it doesn't make sense because. But because it's not like these were, these were unexpected things that popped up. These were budgeted items that were intended to come out of that balance. And so. It's odd that it's like, but it's drawing down our cash balance now because it's coming out while it was already supposed to come out. So how come it wasn't reflecting? Those are the things that are hard and frustrating and making this kind of decision. Cause. I, so I couldn't comment when you were talking about some of your cost savings, but. Great job on just looking back and seeing these cost savings and where we can cut costs here. I love the go back thing you've been working on. Great job on. I love the go back thing you've been working on. Great job on all that kind of stuff. The only thing I hate to see is now we just spend it all on monthly billing. All of our cost savings now go away. It, it, and, and help cover this. I'm not saying that, it's just that it never actually drives costs down. It just covers an additional cost we take on. Anyway, that, those are my frustrations, but I will, I will put it on mute now.
Yeah. And Sheri, I actually, I, I definitely agree with you and hear what you're saying. And unfortunately, it, it sounds like this was just a mistake that we could learn from. And now we know how to report on that to say, hey, look, we've got expected expenses coming up. These should be or, uh, deducted from our cash balance reports so that we, you know, even if it's just another color to see. Yes, we haven't spent this money yet, but it is earmarked for capital expense. And I think that will allow everybody to be able to plan a lot better and more efficiently so that we don't have this issue going forward. But it's kind of one of those learning things that in, in life, every, every mistake that happens, hopefully you learn from it. And that's, that's the best we can do right now is learn from something that happened in the past. So.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody have any other comments, questions? Motion.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Oh, sorry. This is, this is Marcy Hausman on the, on the, on the line. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Marcy.
Oh, okay. Uh, just adding one comment to the discussion, um, something that, that I think could potentially be helpful, I hope. Um, I think as we, as we understand what has been shared around, a concern that the cost, that the effort we've made to save costs is somewhat being negated by moving to monthly billing. I think there's a couple of things to consider uh, as additional benefits that maybe we've not yet, um, I don't know, unpacked. One is which, one is the customer experience. So I do think, and as we discussed in our last meeting, that there is a benefit of efficiency for the customer in just knowing it's now monthly billing, knowing what to expect. And Pam reported on, um, refunds that we had to give because people sort of inadvertently, um, set up auto pay and were doing this payment that was only supposed to be a quarterly payment. They were doing it monthly. And so we ended up sending them a refund, which is of course the right thing to do. But, um, I do have, I do have hope that this decision to move to monthly is, is, we can measure the benefits. You know, do the cost benefit analysis, so to speak, but, um, it's, it's not just a, um, a good financial move in terms of of what's been explained on our end. But I think we will also perhaps see, uh, uh, an improvement with the customer experience that is just going to be consistent. They're planning their monthly budget. They know what to plan for because we have switched to monthly billing. So I think there's some, some benefits that, um, also, uh, support moving forward with this. So just wanted to share that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Hey, this is Patrick Schaefer with, uh, City of Kearns. Um, I just got one question. I, I might've missed it, but when are we going to roll out letting people know that we're going to month to month? Like, are we going to be about a six, six month window? Or are we just going to do it a month prior? To changing.
Oh, to notify.
What's the timeframe for notifying? If the plan is to start February, February billing for January 26th, when are we going to start?
I think, uh, if it is approved today, I think we would want to start notifying immediately. I think we'd want to maybe put something out on the website, uh, put a comment on the bill. I don't want it, obviously we don't want it to be a surprise to anybody when it happens. Um, and so I think we would start notifying people immediately.
Um, if I may help us notify all of our, I mean, us, like our city managers to like, because we can put it out on our media streams as well.
Great idea. Thank you.
Newsletters, different things. I would also recommend a very big 2026.
Yes.
Big bull front monthly billing standing 2026.
Excellent point.
It's, it's one of those like, hey, three words tells it all. Uh, everybody gets the point from that, but then we can see the one two, why.
I think sooner the better would be the best if we approve it.
Yeah.
And I also suggest that when we educate people on that, that we, um, push hard for people to go to paperless at the same time. Hey, we're going to month, and we really encourage everybody to help us by, um, going paperless at the same time so that we can get, uh, managed and taken care of, um, in the best, most efficient and cost-effective way possible and keep your rates down. If you, if you sell it to them that way, I think that'll help, you know?
Yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely, Lori. Thank you.
We're not bailing. That's going to save us a lot.
I think it'll really be appreciated going monthly. And with that, would you like me to thank Melissa?
I am happy to take a motion.
Hey, I would make a motion to move to monthly billing.
Your second? Oh, yeah.
Second.
Ellen, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Let me comment. Should we have stated the date?
All to amend the.
Starting January 26th.
Do you want, do you want to remove that or?
I'm going to start again. Just have.
Which is as planned.
It's clear based on the discussions.
Uh, monthly billing as planned for the agenda. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we apologize for all the extra work and, uh, wringer we put you through to give that, you know, but obviously it's our job to make sure that all the ducks are to row and we need to spend a significant amount of money, but it's definitely warranted since it's our job. So that's.
I may just add, the thing I love about this board is it's not a bobblehead board. You ask questions. You look at things and I appreciate that. And totally understandable that you wanted more information. It's an increased cost.
Yeah.
Respect that. And both of them, I totally respect that.
Well, it's, it's easy to spend an extra 60 cents a box on paper loops, but you know, uh, that, that wasn't a significant amount of money and, you know, like Sheri's concerns and, and a lot of us have also wasted. Uh, you know, we're here to try and keep the cost down for all of our customers and residents. So it's, uh, it's definitely our decision to make that, but, uh, we do understand the benefits that do come with it. Hopefully it will make us healthier physically and financially. So I appreciate that. Uh, looks like we're on to the URS, Port URS product.
So we just recently went through a compliance audit with URS and wanted to share this with the board. Typically, um, URS audits every three to five years. Um, they're just making sure that we're administering these funds directly. And, um, that we're doing that consistently with state law. Now they come in and they look at our policies and procedures that we have in place and, um, check our records also to make sure that we are following those policies. We could go down to, it's actually page two, please. Um, sorry, it's, it's going to be page three, the next one. Yeah. So I'll go through the ABCs of the audit. Um, the first one is the documentation and we do comply with that in our personnel policy. Just chapter nine of our policy handbook. Um, so we were good there. B is the status notifications. Um, and we are required with new employees to, um, add them to URS. And then if an employee separates from corporate, um, we also go back into URS and report that. I, I actually have that on my new hire, um, checklist and on my separation checklist. So we don't miss those. And, and we were fine, um, with the status notifications. And then C is contribution reporting. Um, oh, I should have told you that our, the timeline that they audited, let's see. Was January 1st of 2023 through February 8th of this year. Um, so we have a 30 day timeframe in which we need to report changes of status for an employee. And we, we did that in accordance with state law. So no, no issues with C either. Any questions on what we have so far? And Helen, I'll pass it over to you, you guys.
Okay.
The findings.
So we did have two findings as a result of this audit. Um, the first was that we had not been including longevity merit increases. Were in our case, are lump sum amounts when somebody is topped out or redlined on their salary, we give them a $2,000 lump sum or a $2,500 lump sum instead of 32% raise. Um, we have not been reporting those as eligible compensation and sending the required contributions to URS. Um, we were asked to, well, asked us a light word, but they, they had us go back to March of 2021 and get all the data for everybody who'd gone to that category and correct that with them. That were 43 employees at $12,287 that had not been reported. Um, so we have taken care of that. And then the second finding was we were including cash outs when employees leave, like PTO cash outs, um, severance agreements in the contribution eligible compensation, and that should not have been included. So we paid when we shouldn't have paid. That was 38 employees in the same time period merged 2021 through, I think, January of 2025. Um, 38 employees, $15,957 that we overpaid. So we got a credit back from URS for that. So our net difference is a credit back to the district of $3,670. So financially for the district, it, it turned out fine. Um, I did check with them and asked about employees and their pension and how it's going to affect employees. And they said it's not going to affect employees. So they're held harmless from all of this. Um, and so I went to talk to our, our payroll technician, Lauren McAllister, about going through all of the codes and making sure they're all set up correctly and going through the documentation we have for what is eligible and what is not. And she was already in the process of doing that. So she's proactive and jumped in there and did that. Um, so that should be corrected going forward. And um, are there any questions about the findings? Um, and then the other thing that they suggested was that we intend their employer training that they provide. And we have been doing that. We are going to continue to do that. They do have a main training listed that we are registered for. So we will continue to do that as well. Um, are there any questions overall about that?
Yeah, well done. Appreciate Hazen and Helen spearheading this. And then Lori, McAllister, our payroll technician has been instrumental as well.
Yeah, it's great that that turned out to be a benefit to us too and not something that we had to click out. I mean, obviously we could have cut that.
Yeah.
Maybe extra because we were.
Yes.
Good catch. All firm?
Finished each.
Just making sure. Before I, before I. So, um, we do have any for a closed session? For reasons.
Litigation?
Litigation. Is that a separate?
Yes. They're both separate.
So do we just start with first one?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So we'll need a motion to move to the closed.
Motion to move to closed session.
Set up purposes of litigation. Andy? Uh, all firm, sorry.
Do a roll call on that one.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yeah.
We invite public to.
Yes, we'll also need to have a public to.
We can do the roll call anytime though, to, for that vote.
We can, we can start.
Chris Shelton?
Present.
He's like, hey.
Hannah Barbary. Diane Turner. Missus Spence. Laurie Springham.
Aye.
Marcy Hausman.
Yes.
Pat Bolton. Vic Sudbury.
Yes.
Patrick Schaefer.
Aye.
Robert Pinion.
Aye.
Sherry Orne.
Yes.
Tessa Spitzer. Tom Disutter.
Aye.
Did Tessa answer? She's on. And there's still that funny. Okay. Tessa, could you say yea or nay on the, uh, going to the closed session? And I don't know who John is. I think he's David Phil. Oh, JT, is that you? Is that Johnny Ward? He might be listening for Ann.
But I mean, they're going to pay it out and then we're going to hope they don't sue further. Yeah. What it sounds like.
It's weird.
Okay. Everybody online good with what's been said so far? Yeah.